Wilson, how are you? Do you do the pledge as well?
Yes.
Now, how are you?
I'm good, right? Really want to turn this phone off.
Oh, good morning. You'll find me if I look at it really easy.
Very beachy. Yeah, I didn't have a tuck-in shirt when I left this morning. So are we on air, live, and all that kind of stuff? And it's the appropriate time?
We're live. It wasn't supposed to be live. It wasn't supposed to be live when I pressed the button, but it started. That therein lies the danger. How you like my sign? Where? You're screaming right now. Pick on our website. About $15 on Amazon. It flashes and everything else, but it gets very distracting. How you like my sign, Bert?
What's that? Thank you. Good job, actually.
The green one over there?
So that means it's on.
I can't see it.
Says on air.
Well, I knew that from the thing, but...
It's almost like a warning.
Well, it's, you know, when the green light's on, you know you're live, you know.
Hey, Bert. There are the cameras.
Say, huh, what?
This is the live stream here. This is going out. I could switch between the PDZ camera. This one here. The agenda package.
Cool.
Eva. As Mr. Sapp indicated, he's not going to be here tonight. That's what I thought. He's out of town.
Jeans.
We'll cover that tonight. And all the important people from the county are here, so... Well, Phil, are you ready? Phil, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
Well, being 5:30, just for those of you in the public, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to have a brief CRA meeting before the actual town council meeting. And before we do any of that, we have with us tonight Pastor Jeff Taylor of the Placid Lakes Baptist Church. And Pastor Taylor is going to come up and lead us in invocation in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please rise.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you give us to operate in freedom. We acknowledge, Lord, that our liberty comes from you. And I pray, Father, for the men and women here tonight, that they will operate not according to their own wisdom, but, Lord, drawing from your infinite wisdom. For, Lord, you are all-knowing, and we are but weak creations of yours. And we desire nothing more tonight than for you to lend us the knowledge and the ability to apply that knowledge to the leadership of our community. We put that in your hands tonight. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I guess I should have explained in the beginning. The mayor is off on a little bit of family vacation right now. And so as vice mayor, I will chair the meetings tonight. And I believe also Councilmember Sapp is not going to be able to join us tonight. So with that, Eva, will you call the roll for the CRA meeting?
Mayor Holbrook, Councilmember Royce.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp. Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
And just, Eva, since we had a cut and paste on this, just remember to change the names of the council members that are on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay? Okay, so Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the... I'm sorry, I guess we're looking for approval of the CRA minutes from March 14th. Is that correct, Eva?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, so moved.
Thank you. Second, Ms. Hayes?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the podium, any from the public? Hearing none, all in favor? I guess you have to... I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to number two, CRA project update. Mr. Williams?
Okay, we're still on hold for the Main Street, for the railroad track, for the $40,000 project. And we're pretty much, we haven't started, and we're still on hold, I believe. It's started, but they haven't started, on the Devane Park electrical, starting that. We've notified both of them. Those projects are... We are needing projects. We've got Hendrix Avenue that we probably can start at any time, but we're sort of waiting until we find out how much is going to be left in the budget. As you can see in the thing, $56,848 is what's available now. And that will carry over to the next years when we approve the new budget. And then we'll have the next year's budget coming in.
Any questions about Mr. Williams' presentation? No. Now, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, do you want to discuss 2022, 2023 budget projects, Mr. Williams?
If council has any budget projects that they can suggest, we're looking for projects. I think Rachel would like to get some into the new budget. We're, as I say, Town of Lake Placid Hendrix Avenue, the alleyway along the railroad tracks at $40,000. Hendrix is at $14,000. And Devane Park is electric at $9,990. That's the main one that's... It's going now. And then the alleyway along the railroad track will consume probably a lot of the remainder of that budget. That $40,000 will consume a lot of the remainder of it. But we still need some, you know, I think Vice Mayor Royce mentioned a part of Main Street, lighting, those kind of things. It's for infrastructure, of course, infrastructure project. We looked at maybe a generator for the police department. It does, that's not infrastructure. It was not, it's meant to improve blight, like roads, sidewalks, and things like that. So we shot that one in the foot ourselves, and we called Alhassan and asked. And it's not viable. So we still need some projects along the way of infrastructure, water lines, anything along that line.
And Mr. Williams, council members could bring those to your attention or Eva's attention from time to time, then they'd be under consideration as we go through the budget process, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, the only concern I have is the original money budgeted for the railroad, the road down there behind the railroad, may be more, in fact, than when we originally put it out for bid. So that may consume a little bit more of the budget going forward. So, but, yeah, we can always suggest other projects for this upcoming year.
Is that all, Mr. Wilson?
No comment.
Again, I would just suggest that Alan or others look into... Make sure we have enough of the... I noticed we, you know, we had some lampposts that have been involved in accidents. And before, all of a sudden, people don't make those anymore. Let's make sure we have a couple backup of those. And then I would like us to at least think about what we may do to provide some lighting there on North Main, either in trees or in the ground pointing up or whatever, but just that would be the main thing, so...
If we could get the lighting on Main Street, north and south, to be somewhat consistent with what we have on Interlake, I think it would help us a great deal, and especially on the south end of Main Street, if we could get the light brought up a little bit higher standard, a little more lumens back there.
Okay. We'll have Alan and others look into that and let us know. Anything else?
No, sir.
Is there any comments from the public? Okay, seen none. Mr. Williams, has anyone notified you that they want to speak from citizens not on the agenda?
I haven't heard of any.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak during the CRA meeting? Okay, seen none, we'll adjourn the CRA meeting. Now we'll move into... We'll do call to order of the town council meeting. And again, Eva, if you'll do roll call, please.
Mayor Holbrook, Councilmember Royce.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp. Councilmember Hayes.
Here.
Okay. First thing is consent agenda, only consent agenda this evening. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve consent agenda one.
Second.
Okay. Any conversation, anything? Seen none, if you'll call the roll, Eva.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Are there, there's no consent agenda two this month. Are there any requests to speak, citizens not on the agenda, Phil or Eva? Then I've been made aware of, are there any other presentations at this time? Okay, I guess we'll turn it on. I don't know whether, Eva, it's you, or it's Rachel, or it's going to lead the conversation about the millage rate.
Okay, we've got the numbers from the county, the DR 420, yeah, presented here. Your current rate, what we have now, is 3.25. The rollback rate, according to the DR 420, is now 2.9359. We've given you, you know, calculations based on that. You'll see that the 3.25 ad valorem is 875,495. The 95%, which would be your general fund, less your CRA money, so that would be the general fund. Your CRA revenue would be the 41,493. So total tax revenue at 790,228 is calculated out.
Mr. Wilson?
For the record, we can go down on the millage rate when we set it, but we cannot go up.
Correct. Whatever we publish.
And in the past, that's what you've kind of worked it that way.
Okay. And just so the public knows, and make sure we're all clear, when we do the publish rate, if we do anything, if we do anything above the rollback rate, then it'll be advertised as a tax increase.
Correct.
Even if we set the millage rate at a lower rate than it was last year, if we use any number above the rollback rate, then it'll be advertised as a tax increase.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Just wanted everyone to make sure they were aware. Okay, well, and for everyone's information, what we're going to do is we're going to set the tentative rate for publication this evening, then we can go through the process and we can then... We can adjust any rate from that level downward, at that level or downward through the public hearings that'll be held in September to approve the budget, correct?
Correct. Once you approve this, I will complete the DR 420, get it back to the county, which will have the first hearing date, which is your first hearing is in September. And that is the first notice to the public. And then that second hearing, if you decide to reduce it, reduce it lower, that's what actually will get advertised in the newspaper between the first and second hearing for adoption.
Okay.
So the one, the first one is just the first notice with your first run, basically your first one in it.
Just want to make sure, Mr. Wilson says you're clear on what our options are, correct? You're clear on what our options are?
I thought I was talking to him. Yes, I'm clear.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion on the current rate, basically.
We're looking for a motion to hopefully set the tentative millage rate at somewhere between probably 2.9 and 3.25, whatever y'all want to do.
I'll make a motion that we set the current rate at 3.25.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion amongst the board? Anyone from the audience? Seen none? Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. I guess I would like to say publicly that while we are doing this, I would hope that staff would bring us a budget that's based closer to 2.9 or 2.95 than 3.25, and that we seek to, you know, the difference is roughly $85,000, that we not use every bit of that if not at all possible. Okay. We'll move on then. We are in... We're in public hearings, so I see Ms. Culpepper come forward. I assume she's going to lead us in that, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Culpepper.
Good evening, councilmembers. Melanie Culpepper, planner, town planner for the record. The hearing has been duly noticed and published. This is the second reading of ordinance 2022-05. The applicant has requested to change the current future land use designation from public semi-public to residential office to allow her to use the old town hall building for a real estate office. And staff is available for any questions.
Would we read the title?
Did you put it in? I thought I said...
Either Ray, either Ray can do it, or you can do it.
Ms. Culpepper, well, Ms. Culpepper reads.
It's usually on the PowerPoint, right?
Phil, can you scroll that just a little bit down so she can see the title?
Or can I use this mouse?
You got it.
Thank you. An ordinance number 2022-05, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Town of Lake Placid, 2030 comprehensive plan for the property identified by the Highlands County Property Appraiser through parcel ID P 36362912000D00060, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Before we take any potential action, does anyone have any questions, Ms. Culpepper? Obviously, we took this up a month ago. This is the second reading. But I'm even allowed, anyone from the public like to comment on this before we take potential action? Okay, seen none, I would look for one of the council members to...
I'll make a motion to move to approve on second reading, ordinance number 2022-05.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Seen none, Eva, if you'll pull the board, the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. We'll continue on, Ms. Culpepper.
Yes, this is second reading of ordinance 2022-06, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, amending section 154-17, commercial architectural standards of the code of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. Again, Melanie Culpepper, town planner for the record. The town council had requested us to look at the architectural standards of the code and to provide clarification. We discussed this last time. The change that we are proposing is to remove the word "primary", to change it to, say, "facades", to make it clear that anything that is an exterior wall has to be used in this list of materials. That's a preferred list. So it can't be metal, which that discusses this in C. It can only have a 10% exterior finish and the roof. We also are proposing changes to allow for a variance process. Staff is available for any questions on this one.
Mr. Harris, have you reviewed this from a legal standpoint? And we all, good code-wise, is from a legal standpoint?
Yes.
Okay. Before we start taking the action, is there any questions from council members to Ms. Culpepper? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this facade amendment up here where there's a number. I'm coming. Amendments to section 154-17, Architectural Standards.
Your motion is to approve on second reading the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Your second?
Second.
Any further comments from the podium? Any from the public? Seen none? Ms. Cooper, Eva?
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Culpepper?
This hearing is for ordinance, it's the first reading of ordinance 2022-09, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, amending section 154-26C2, limited commercial district of the code of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date. Melanie Culpepper, town planner for the record. We discussed this in a prior hearing, but we separated it out to make it its own change. The requested change was to allow accessory dwelling units or, like in your downtown area, you have build, commercial buildings with rental units upstairs. And in the past, the interpretation was that the person that worked there and needed to live there too. So with a live and work type operation, staff had brought it to the town council to see if you wanted to change the code. It was suggested to bring it to you. So we've just changed the language to say "when accessory to a permitted commercial use", meaning that you can have someone else working downstairs, but have a different tenant upstairs.
Any questions, Ms. Culpepper? Okay, we're on first reading. Mr. Harris, you've reviewed this from a legal standpoint. We're good that regard?
You have the discretion.
Pardon me. Okay, Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2022-09 on first reading.
I'll second.
Any further questions or conversation? Any members of the public? Seen none, Eva, pull the council, please.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes.
Again, Melanie Culpepper, town planner for the record. This is first reading of ordinance 2022-07, an ordinance of the Town of Lake Placid, Florida, amending the future land use map of the Town of Lake Placid, 2030 comprehensive plan for that property identified by the Highlands County Property Appraiser through parcel ID P 243629A000020000 and P 243629A0000200010. This is a property that was recently annexed into the town and has a Highlands County commercial land use and a Highlands County B3 zoning. Originally, the applicant, the owner of the property, was selling to another individual that wanted to potentially do warehouses on this property. So they were going to do a future land use amendment to commercial, town commercial general, and a zoning change, but the zoning change has been withdrawn currently. So they wanted to continue to move forward with the proposal to do the future land use amendment from Highlands County Commercial to Town of Lake Placid Commercial General.
Is the applicant with us tonight? Mr. Harris, have you reviewed this?
No. I reviewed the earlier version, but I have not reviewed this one. You may have sent it to me, not...
So nothing has changed? They're just not doing the zoning change. They just want to move forward with the future land use amendment at this time. And then later, when a new buyer of the property comes in, they'll have to go for a plan development.
Because they had some things that I absolutely disagreed with, but I believe those were in the zoning as opposed to the land use.
Correct. This is, basically, all you're doing on this is taking it from a county commercial land use to a town commercial land use. They will still have to do a plan development when they come in to do the zoning change.
I would recommend the town pass it on first reading and come back on... This is, does this require two readings, Melanie?
Yes.
Okay, then make the decision next month?
Yes.
Everything Melanie says, this should not be a problem. I'd like to lay my eyes on it before I say yes, absolutely. Melanie, did, I don't know, did you send this to me after they revised?
I did, yes.
My apologies.
Well, and of course, like I said, it's not been revised. Nothing is changing on this part of it.
Right.
But yes, I did send it.
Well, my concerns were in the zoning, and if that's gone, I'm probably going to be just fine with this. It is an imported tract, and this is an imported piece of property to our community.
Right.
Any questions or comments from council members?
I, too, am concerned with the zoning and with what the future use of it would be. But I agree with the change into the commercial land use and putting it into the Town of Lake Placid. I understand that part. But I just want to be clear with everyone that that is absolutely all we're doing.
That's correct.
Not giving the go-ahead to anything else that was proposed in all this stuff here.
Yes, and it will still have a county B3 zoning. It will be inconsistent because it'll be a town future land use and a county zoning district. They will not be able to do anything until they make it consistent, which will have to do a plan development zoning change, and that will come back before you all as well.
I would also like to go on the record that before I could be supportive of a PD that we're going to have to get a lot of information, and we're going to address front-end, rear-end, back-end roads and a wide range of other things, just so the applicant has fair notice. Okay, having said that, Chair will entertain a motion to move forward.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve ordinance 2022-07 on first reading.
Second, Ms. Hayes?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion amongst the council? Anyone from the public? Hearing none, Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Okay. Joe might lead it later on. Okay, do we need to set the action agenda, or we just move on to six? We, I guess, I take it we just move on to number six. Mr. Williams?
Number six under the council.
Okay.
Six A win.
Okay. I'll lead this off, and with us tonight, we have the Highlands County's interim county administrator, Ms. Lori Herner, Lance Sterns, Lance Marine, I'm sorry, and Chief Sterns. And let me, and Lori, Ms. Herner, why don't you and Lance and the chief come forward? And if I say anything incorrect, and you all, please, you please correct me, but I'm going to kind of share what I perceive to be the situation in regards to the future fire department EMS station, siting and construction. And I was in a meeting several weeks ago with these three individuals and a couple of other county staff members, and we talked about the siding of the thing, just so the public's aware. The county had, had a donated parcel basically across the street by the hospital. They've run into, to say the least, some environmental challenges that could be quite extensive and expensive to the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so several weeks ago, the county commission instructed their staff to start to look at other options. One of the options that they, I believe, are very interested in looking at would be the town providing a donation of a portion of the parcel that we had previously donated to the county for the station. And one of the things that kind of precluded that site historically was how the building was going to be constructed, the materials. And apparently, the construction world has changed in the last year or two, and now the county perceives anyways that they would be constructing a concrete block and stucco building that would be on all four sides or encompass all of the facades of the building other than the metal roll-up doors. And so that kind of problem went away because of the way it'd be constructed. We have also, I believe, I, Mr. Marine provided a, a very preliminary map or sketch of the, of the projected building, and it would fit on that footprint, and it would take up approximately somewhere between maybe a third, up to no more than a half of that piece of property, including retention, we believe. We have, but what I think the county would like to do is have us at least provide a consensus that we were willing to donate a portion of that property again before... They're going to need to expend some additional resources to do some additional architectural review and make sure that the building would in fact fit there, they could site it there. In our conversations, we talked about them constructing what I'll call a common or road or entryway driveway so that when we further develop the rest of the parcel in the coming years, for whatever purposes, there would be a very public access point that we would be able to utilize for whatever reason we wanted to on that property. And so I think, Ms. Herner, what you all would like to hear is, yes, unless something goes off the rails, we would be interested in donating a portion of the property. Have I misstated anything so far?
No, sir, you're right on target.
Okay. And, and I, in those conversations, Chief Sterns indicated that he's looking forward to building a complex that is very public-friendly and that he would, he would encourage and invite the public to come and visit the firehouse, and he's not at all adverse to having other public buildings nearby, having a park nearby and all that. He would like a very public building. Is that accurate, Chief Sterns?
That's correct, but we'd like to use the term "community-friendly."
Okay. And Mr. Marine, is there anything I've left out that's important for us to know? I don't even think those mics are turned on, so speak up loudly, please.
No, I, I think you covered it very well, and again, we're looking for that somewhat commitment before we expend more resources to make sure that the actual building we have designed will fit the site and work well with also your plan to put a road and, and work together.
Any of y'all have any questions of them, of the county staff?
I'm committed to it. I mean, we, we've done it once before.
I'm, I'm okay with it as long as it's the proper size. There was something, something in the red and somewhere that we were going to get downsized from what was originally...
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. So originally, and these are going to be round numbers, and Chief, you correct me, or Lance, you checked me wrong. Originally, the county had made plans for an approximately 11,000 square foot building. Then there was conversations about taking that building down significantly. I think now the current design is roughly in the 7,000 square foot range, and they have determined, they have determined that it does not, I think it's still going to be what I call, what they would call a three-bay station. It would still have the same living quarters arrangements. It's just they, due to budgetary constraints, because with the state of the world now, they, the county only, when I say "they" folks, I mean the county. The county only has a certain level of resources, and even at $7,000, they are still out of budget for this building. They're going to have to deal with some stuff. In this meeting, it was also indicated that... The county was very... That the county wanted to move forward on an accelerated pace and get this thing going, get it, get it constructed, and if we went and donated the land, I think the county committed to breaking ground and starting construction in the first or second quarter of 2023. Is that all, is what I said relatively accurate? So I think that they, that there may have been, Ms. Hayes, some less than what Chief Bayshore originally had indicated, but that this building will provide the needs for that fire, fire and EMS facility from decades ahead. Is that accurate, Chief Sterns?
Yes, sir.
That answer your question, Ms. Hayes?
Well, it answers my question. I'm just concerned that, that the south end of the county is getting enough space and enough, a large enough station to accommodate the, the amount of area that you have to serve in this end of the county. As you know, this is, I mean, we don't have the population, but we have a tremendous amount of land, and I don't want to see this downsized just because we don't have people on the land. We have a lot of land that's important.
Chief, why don't you make sure that, if you don't mind, turn that mic, is it on? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, what we did with the building from the 11,000 square foot model that was started was we went to some of our current stations that service the county, and we did a three, three-station survey, took a lot of information from where we're living today with the same kind of units and the current units that are allocated to Lake Placid, and we, we said, this is what we need to do to make everything fit and come together, have enough sleeping room for the people that are currently sleeping, and enough room for volunteers and apparatus, and, and we've done that in that 7,000 square feet.
And one of the things that we think is important is that we did go to the people that use the station every day. Those are the people that work there, the volunteers and the paid staff that work there, and we felt that that was important. The previous plan, we feel, was, was overbuilt, quite frankly, for what we need, and so therefore we really don't feel that it is downsizing to a size that will not be appropriate for years to come. We feel like we put it into an area now that makes sense for the people who have to work there, live there, clean it, work through it, and so we, we were very confident in the size that it is now.
Do you see anything in the future that would cause you to increase the amount of people that would be housed at that station, thus needing more square footage down the road?
It, it has the capability already. It, you can sleep 10.
Okay.
So it, it's there if that's necessary, but we, we're, our job right now is to increase in number of volunteers.
Okay.
And keep it running that way and continue to have that philosophy of combined career and volunteer service.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris, did you have a question or a comment? Okay, I thought I saw you lean forward.
I did. I think I changed my mind.
Chief, I have a question. The design is pretty much going to be similar to other stations you've currently built, and I'm sure that they're kind of cookie-cutter generic plans that in the event that you would need to expand, and that's something that I'd like for y'all to consider too, now rather than later on your, you know, the, the total number of, amount of land that you're going to be requiring, you know, for future expansion potentially. So just want to keep that in mind down the road.
Okay.
I'd rather have a little bit too much than not enough down the road.
It is a design that works well with our other stations, and the stations for the future will be using these plans across the county, so it's not something that will be, stand out to be different or insufficient in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm, I'm actually going to open it up to the public. Is there any questions from the public in regards to this matter? So, Mr. Harris, I'm going to ask you, sir, I think probably alls we could really even do at this stage is just provide a consensus from the council that our intention is to work cooperatively with the county as long as things progress as we perceive them to be. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. So I, I don't, I don't think, is Ms. Herner, Chief Sterns, Mr. Marine, is that, is that good enough for you all to continue to move forward and to...
Yes.
Spend a limited amount of money to do your additional planning?
Yes, sir, we'll alert, the commission comes together tomorrow for workshops, so I'll alert them to your decision this evening. We should be fine to move forward. I just want to take this time too to thank you, Ray, for a member, for being a member of the town council, working with us so much, and we'll be happy to answer any questions from any of you at any time, so.
Yeah, and I, I would like to say to Ms. Herner, Ms. Herner assumed the interim county administrator role on July the 2nd, I believe.
Correct.
And she will probably basically be in charge for the next four to six months at least, so if there's anything we need, we'll be dealing with Ms. Herner. Hopefully, through her, her reign at the head of the county, we will get this project going and...
Yes, sir.
Start shoveling some dirt and all that. So we, we appreciate it, and I, I, when we were in the meeting, my perception was that Chief Sterns and Mr. Marine were very excited about the prospects, the potential prospects of this site and making it work. Is, I don't want to misrepresent what you, what you guys said, but I, is that accurate?
Yeah, we're ready to report.
Okay.
Let's do it.
Mr. Harris?
Ms. Herner, we've got a set of documents we used last time. I'll freshen those up. Who do you want to get them? You, Lance, Chief?
You can send them to Lance. We can move through the Parks and Facilities Department. He's got capital projects under his care there.
Will do.
And obviously, Mr. Marine, what we'll really need for you is once you've done the additional architectural review and that you've moved that project kind of as far west as you can and know what your retention needs are, you know, we would like to see, okay, how much of that exact property would you desire? And I, we, we've covered what the other things we may or may not do there are, so I just want to make sure we, we keep your all's footprint adequate for future expansion, but as small as potentially possible.
Okay, we'll keep you up to date.
Everyone good? Nothing from the, well, thank you all for coming. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my favorite topic. Mr. Barber, I perceive that on or about July 8th or 11th, you indicated that some stuff was going to happen in regards to the grant cycle. I don't see Corbett here tonight for me to ask him. Any questions? Are we, are we still moving forward with the pipe bursting deal?
I have the, in front of me, the environmental review that just came back. This is the giant binder that they did. It's waiting for basically your signature. We just got it into last week. Scratch that out since the mayor's not here, have you sign it. Apparently, after they receive that, then there is a notice of intent to request release of funds. We have to advertise in the paper. There's a seven-day comment period. Then a bunch of stuff goes back to DEO for review, and then they eventually will give us clearance to go ahead and give us release of grant funds. So she didn't tell me exactly what the timeframe is on that, but I'm suspecting within a week or two, we can probably go out to advertise that project for bid.
It's your recommendation that, that either the mayor or myself in his absence sign it on behalf of the council?
I, I've been told they, that you can sign this as vice mayor.
Okay, that's your recommendation, that we move forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Barber, about the pipe bursting project? Okay, well, we don't need to take any action then, just you need my signature when we're done in a few minutes? Okay, great. Okay, we'll continue moving. Discussion regarding Dow Hall and Main Avenue project. I, Ms. Salz or Ms. Culpepper, are you here to comment on that, or what do we need to know? Okay. Do you, Ms. Salz, why don't you come on up and... And again, maybe I'll, I'll, I'll take the lead on that if it's okay. Well, council members and Ms. Salz can correct me when I'm wrong. Or Phil can correct me, or someone can. I perceive that we needed to have an agreement between ourselves and the county as to who was going to pay or who was going to pay how much for the work of the consultant. Are you all look, when I say you all, I'm sorry, is the county looking for us to put a foot forward, or do you have a proposal, or what do, how do we need to move this forward?
Can you hear me? Okay. So tomorrow, there's an item on, no, not tomorrow, at the next meeting that the board has to, to talk about the proposal. So the two recommendations from staff is to either split it in half or in thirds, and then to bring that back to the, the council. I believe at the last council meeting, you all voted for the county, or to send an item to the county, for the county to pay all $19,000 of the consulting services. I don't know where that stands. I didn't get, we had some emails back and forth. I didn't get a memo or anything to put on there. I'm put in the statement of issue for Dow Hall and Main that that was your motion, but from staff's perspective, or, you know, from the county's perspective, my recommendation would be either to split it in half or the thirds. I mean, the board can choose to go in any direction they like, but that would be most appropriate, I would think.
My, my recollection, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize. My recollection is that $19,000 or that $19,500 had three components to it.
Oh, that's correct, yes.
And, and two of those components would, would be ours solely.
Yes.
And to, if we wanted to move forward.
13, I think, just for the intersection.
Right, and so, and, and I know that, I think I made the motion that was passed to say let the county pay for all of it because we, there was an absence of anything else, and I, I probably want to personally rescind that position and have the council talk about for the portion that is the 13,000 portion for that actual intersection. And that, it's not actually an intersection, it's actually a segment that, correct me if I'm wrong, stretches roughly from where the Montessori School is north of that area down to South Main, or at least to Interlake, maybe even down to the Rera tracks, correct?
Depending on how far you, you chose to study.
Okay. So I'll now open it up to council, discuss, I mean, you're saying this is going to be before, come before the county commission on the 19th?
Yes, so not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow. What is that date? A week from tomorrow.
Okay, so I'll, so what we're talking, what we should probably have a conversation about for you all to be able to share during that meeting is what the town would propose as far as a cost share, right?
Yes, it is a county road, which we discussed, but the primary people who use it are both town businesses and then town residents, so that would be why I would feel it, it would be most appropriate to recommend to the board that it be a share cost.
But to be clear, it's not a town road, it's a county.
No, it is, it is county.
Okay, that's both Dow Hall and Main are county roads?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said down, I'm old.
Did I say town? I apologize. I didn't know I was going to be talking on this item, so.
Okay.
Apologize that it's a little back and forth.
Refresh my memory, the three components were the intersection and the, and the...
There was like an ordinance review, you know... There was like an ordinance review, you know? One of them was an ordinance, go ahead, Ms. Salz.
So there was the ordinance review. So a lot of the businesses along Main and Interlake, when we've worked with them through planning services, they don't necessarily feel that the code applies as well to them as it does say those along your strip, so along 27. So having someone come in, and so right now, who has been given the proposal is Panoni and Associates to say, hey, these tweaks or these edits would be most appropriate for like a historic or a downtown area. That one was 2,500. Then the second one was a parking review study, so they would come in, they would count, they would, they would do those components. I can't remember what that price was, and then it was a few thousand dollars, three or four, and then there was $13,000 to do, to look at that intersection. And so the, the things that were kind of proposed at the time were a possible roundabout, also extending that median down maybe to the Montessori school. I think Councilman Sapp said maybe we put the roundabout down there, but what they'll do is they'll do an analysis of the best way to get pedestrians across from where like the two parking lots are over to, to where the businesses are.
And, and I would opine that it, that the two out of the three segments would probably clearly be stuff that the Towne Lake Plaza, if we choose to do them, would do.
Correct.
The other one, that, because it's a county road, is up for discussion as to what, if any, share we ought, we were willing to put into, because it, it impacted town businesses or whatever.
Exactly, yes. So, and there were multiple pots of money. And then from a planning, not a planning, from a budgetary standpoint, there's no transportation trust dollars available, so it's only what's available through our planning budget, and I only have seven or eight thousand dollars left too, or we'd have to go into the new fiscal year to do that.
What was the total?
The total was 13,000, and I don't have it, does that sound right?
Eva, I think Eva wants to say something.
Well, nineteen for all the pieces, but as far as...
You're going to provide clarification, Eva?
Well, page, yes, page four of the minutes from the last meeting was, you move to ask Highlands County to perform an ice analysis on Main Avenue and Dow Hall to have the town staff budget up to 7,000 for the master parking plan and zoning.
So if it's okay with council, we'll just, I mean, for the sake of our conversation, what we're going to talk about, we can talk later about the 4475 and the 2,500. Those, if we move forward, would clearly be our responsibility, I perceive. What we're really talking about is what, what would we if, want to offer, if anything, to help offset the cost of the $13,000 study?
And that's that intersection control evaluation component.
Scroll down, that one will be drawn, it's the next one down. It's the motion I wrote.
And I believe this section can be paid for through the CRA from the town, correct?
So, if I might, Eva, if we were to move forward with offering a proposal, what, what would we need to do? We need to do a budget adjustment, or would we, would this be something that we would start the process and budget it in a subsequent year, or what, what line items would we take it out of?
Are we talking about CRA, or are we talking about regular budget? That's a Rachel question.
And/or either, from my perspective anyways.
It will require a budget amendment, either in the CRA or in the, the general fund.
But to be clear, that budget, that budget amendment would only be once we came to an agreement and started the project. We don't need to do that prior to.
No.
Okay.
No.
I, I guess the next question is, if we were to offer $6,500 or something, do we have the resources in the, in one budget or another to do that?
Yes.
Any questions, Ms. Hayes?
I, I wouldn't have a, we're talking about this $13,000, is this for actually doing it, or is this for planning? This is just for planning and, or, and/or design, right? Just look at it.
It's not even, I don't think, the design, it's basically consulting to do some planning. It may be a very rough design, but certainly not construction design.
Right, right, because construction isn't going to cover it, but...
So they're going to come in and do the intersection control evaluation. So there'll be different elements that they'll look at, and then they'll give us different plans to consider. So one thing that they may suggest is that as a lot of traffic comes up from that hill from Montessori, maybe putting shrubs on that side, or stamping the concrete, or, you know, there's, there's a myriad of things that could be done to, to address the needs that are happening at that intersection. So they'll give us the planning analysis. There is a traffic engineer who's on the project as well, who will be able to weigh in on what is being presented to the town and to the county, so we'll be able to make a really informed decision moving forward. But yes, 13,000 is just for planning services.
Right, right, and who is the "they"?
They is Panoni is who we have right now for...
I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same people.
Yes, ma'am.
And I thought that, also that Gator Howerton mentioned that a roundabout just wasn't even, you know...
I don't think it's feasible because of this space. I, I see Mr. Harrison's here. I don't know if he's here because of this, or he's just an interested citizen, or if he has something he wants to add or not. Okay.
No, that was one of the items that was possibly suggested, but if you were to put a roundabout, our county engineer doesn't feel that you would be able to send a semi down through that roundabout, and that would be something important to still be able to make it through that area. So that would be on the table. The only other suggestion was if you moved it down possibly towards the Montessori school, and so I can give that information to Panoni and Associates for their consideration, but I doubt it would come back as a true recommendation.
I don't, I don't think that's going to be logical. I, I would be all right with saying that we could, as long as, as Mr. Rachel down here says we have the money, that we could offer $6,500 to go towards, towards the, towards the intersection.
Is that a, is that a motion?
I would make a motion to the, to the effect that we would offer $6,500 toward the 13,000 that is projected for the intersection planning.
For the sake of discussion, is there a second, Mr. Wilson?
Second.
Okay. Okay, is there any additional thing you want to say in support of your motion, Ms. Hayes?
Well, I think it's obvious that that intersection needs attention, as long as we have the, the money and we can, we can put part of that money in there. Frankly, I, I want a dog in that fight. I want us to have a seat at that table.
Are you interested in, in the other, the parking surveys and the, the study?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I thought that was...
That would be additional money that...
Yes, I thought that was a given, but yes. And the, and if I need to amend the motion to include that, I would be happy to do that, but I think the historic and the parking is absolutely critical to a solution of that situation.
I'll modify my second.
Okay. So, I just want to make sure I understand, Ms. Hayes, your motion now is that we would, we would request that the county hire Panoni to do this work, and that we would be willing to contribute $6,500 for half of the study for that segment, and that we would then pay the other two segments, I'm going off of memory now, $2,500 and 4475, I believe, for the other two components of the study by Panoni, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, is there anything else? I'm going to open it up to the public. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this? I just want to make sure county staff, I mean, last month, I didn't perceive things were clear, or we, or is it clear today where we are than we were a month ago?
It is to me. I mean, as far as how we're splitting the money, the different components, we used our library of consultants, so I'll follow up with Panoni and say, after your motion, you're ready, well, I guess after we go to the board and see how they, they do. But I'll at least let them know that you guys are definitely looking to move forward with the two items. We'll wait on the last item for the board's vote, and then we'll kind of move forward. And we'll continue to basically be a partnership with your, your town staff and with county staff to get that project done.
Before we go to a vote, I want to make sure I understand one thing, and this question is to Mr. Harris, to Rachel, to Eva. If this comes to fruition, we can just decide at a later date whether or not to take these monies out of either our general fund or the CRA. Is that accurate? Are you comfortable with that, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is everyone good with that? Yeah, I think I already opened it up to public. No one had an opinion?
Eva's got something.
I do have a question, clarification. So the motion that was given last month, is this just restating that same motion, or is that?
This motion will override, this will, this will override whatever action we took a month ago. It's my, that's in 10 of your motion, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 6,500 towards the 13,000.
Right.
Correct, and that we, we would, as they're talking with a consultant, we would be willing to cover the 25 and the 4475 for the other two components of work that Panoni would be doing.
Okay.
So, out of the whole 19, whatever, we're, we're putting in the vast, vast majority of the money to help the counties.
County's putting in 6,500. County would be putting in 6,500 of the total.
It's, it's important to have a county component.
The towns request to have a partner.
Okay, any other questions?
None.
Sinon, Ms. Eva?
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Salz.
Thank you.
I guess you're going to stay right there, and, um, let me turn this over, discussion of future planning services, to Mr. Harris to lead the conversation on Ms. Culpepper and Ms. Ms. Salz, if you would.
Well, we got news from Ms. Culpepper and Ms. Salz, so I'll let you start with the news and announce your decision, then we can talk about our option. How's that?
Sure. Leah Salz, Development Director for the record, for the B O C C, and then as the towns planner under our current MOU. So with the state of development currently and with our staffing shortages within our office, we are having to pull on consultants to do our day-to-day planning services, and as such, I let Phil and Mr. Harris know that we are needing to not renew our current planning MOU with the town. So that's kind of where we are right now. I believe that runs through the end of September, and then we would stop with the day-to-day services. We've had some conversation back and forth on, is there anything else that could be provided? We could continue if you would like, a, a local office, and of course, it would have to be through MOU or that, that type of thing, signs and alcohol ordinances or requests. What are the other services?
Residential permits, when they come in for a house, we could sign off on those residential zoning permits, that, just the development, you know, special exceptions, variances, and zoning changes and all of that, it's just, it's, we don't have the capacity to do those, but when somebody comes in to apply to have a building permit for a house, or put in a pool or a shed or something, we could still be, review those and sign off if you all chose to want to have an interlocal for that, and then potentially signs, you all have a separate sign permit application that you, we review currently, and we would look into still reviewing and approving those.
Do you see your decision as being temporary, like for a year until we get past the current development cycle and you get restaffed, or do you see this as more permanent?
I, I don't see it as permanent, I mean, and it's not something we really wanted to do to begin with. We very much have enjoyed working for the town and providing planning services, and we've tried several creative solutions to find staff to not have to, you know, not renew this current contract. We have tried hiring within our own department and kind of raising up, that's about a two-year process of those that we have hired as planning techs. We've only had one person kind of stick and really see that they have a desire to continue with planning. We've tried hiring others with what we thought would be transferable skills to the planning profession, and they just did not. So right now, with just one planner, and we're not receiving any applicants with any type of experience nor credentials, so it's not that we're not offering competitive pay or those types of things, simply no one is applying.
I would say we have had, it's been like a year and a half since Dana Riddell left us, two years since Jody, a couple months since our last planner, and we have not been able to fill any of those. So it, at least a year, if not more, before we could get some good staff and we could get back, like Leah said, we do see it as temporary, but longer-term temporary, not something that, you know, in six months, we would be able to pick it back up.
I, like Ray, believe there is a lot of value in working with the county in planning, a tremendous amount of value. I didn't realize that you were willing to continue with those things. We had discussed some options, and then the next thing I saw was, we don't have the staff, and thanks.
Well, just for that...
What I'd like to do is ask you to pass this for a month, and let me have some discussions with Leah and Melanie, and let's look at what interim solutions we can bring back to the council, which may be hiring somebody to do some, more than not, I mean, some more now, and let me see what our options are.
Possible hybrid plan.
Yeah, a hybrid. One of the things we had discussed would be either you or someone we hire do the day-to-day stuff, if that's the, and, and then still work with the county on the longer range, bigger picture development things, and how we do that by cost, how we allocate those, I don't have an answer, but I'd sure like the ability to bring back a recommendation to you and find the best of both worlds solution if we can.
I was just going to say, and like I said, it's really the development is the, the longer process that takes, it's the harder process, so, you know, like I said, if somebody comes in for just signing off on a house permit, they've already got the appropriate zoning, but if they want to do a subdivision, or they come into our office and ask for, I have a commercial property and I want to be able to build on it, that, those things we would need to refer just to different staff.
We would definitely be open to some type of hybrid solution. We just wanted to give you all as much notice as, as possible, and, and saying that we couldn't continue as we are currently structured into the new fiscal year.
Does the hybrid something, anybody get heartburn over that, where we might hire some outside help, at least temporary for a year, maybe two, I don't know?
I don't think we have a whole lot of choice at this point.
We don't. I mean, I hear the council, the, the bottom line is, don't throw the county out because of a bump in the road. Let's figure out a way to fix it and move forward. Is that a fair synopsis?
Yes, sir.
Right, I just want to be clear, when, when, when we come back to this next month, I want to be clear what they're going to be able to handle and what we're going to have to pick up, because we're going to have to look at what, what are who, or what agencies or whatever, are we going to have to hire to pick up this? So these, these things that are, people come in and ask to do a development or whatever, and they don't sit for months simply because we don't have somebody to take a look at it.
And I'm happy to share with you the way that we have set up with the consultants that we have. If there's a way to piggyback off of that structure, or those types of things, I mean, we'll, we'll of course give you that information.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Are you good with letting Mr. Harris work on this, Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson? Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Well, ladies, let me say thank you very much. Appreciate being able to work with you all, and I, I hope that the things you mentioned, you know, especially the building department, stuff like that, we do not obviously have the expertise to review building permits or, you know, plans and so.
And you're, just to clarify, your building department interlocal is not, that's not part of this. This is only the planning services. So, all the building permits would still go through the building department, but staff wouldn't, planning staff would not necessarily be reviewing the planning and zoning sections of those applications.
Okay, thank you. I know Ms. Salz, that's her department as well, so I just wanted to make sure, okay.
No, absolutely, two separate entities.
Any, anything else from the council? Is anyone from the public? Okay, well, thank you, ladies, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, Mr. Harris, if I'm reading this right, we are on to you to talk about the FDEP grant agreement.
Yes. We have come to terms with the FDEP staff on language and the grant agreement. Most of it, most of this grant agreement, the many, many pages, are forms that are not debatable. They have state and federal law behind them, and a lot of things that Joe and Rachel will have to track and report. But what we have looked at is the scope of work, and you'll see that in the documents... And you'll see that in the documents. It's probably a seven or eight-page piece of paper, and toward the back of it, there is a rough budget. The important factor is, when we applied for the grant, we said we would hook up septic tanks. Well, all of our prices more than doubled in the past twelve months, which made this impossible to make the math work. So the D E P, and it ended up being a question of statewide significance, whether, because others got similar grants, not as big as ours, whether they were requiring hookups, or just requiring the lines be put in so people could hook up later, or we could encourage people to hook up now. The D E P has come back and said, we'll rely on chapter three eighty-one point oh five, five, six, six, whatever it is, which means, once the septic tanks fail, people are required to hook up. That doesn't bind us, you can still encourage people by a multitude of ways, that you've seen in the various resolutions I proposed mainly six months ago. But it, my concern is the way the language had been written is it required hookups. Well, there's no way we could do that economically, and I didn't want to see us get down to the end and somebody in the federal government say, you didn't fulfill all your commitments, I want all my money back. Well, you'd see me go out the back door and, you know, where'd who go, kind of discussion. So they have come back and agreed, no, hookup is not required. So now we're going forth, Joe has gotten several folks that are ready to bid on design work for the various collection systems. You're, you've already entered the contract with Panoni for the.
West Water Plant.
The plant, now it's just a matter of getting the collection systems designed, the cost estimates on those. We have some cost estimates. As we make the decisions which ones to build, we can then address the budget. You'll notice in the back part of the scope of work, the budget still has allocated four million dollars to hook up various folks. You have to make the hard decision, fortunately you, not me, on this one, and it's going to be a hard one, at least in my mind it is. It would, for example, pay for a low-pressure line to go around another lake versus hook up a lot of folks, or a few folks. So that's going to be the trade-off. And hopefully, by the time we're making that decision, we'll have before you all the tools that you could consider using, whether you use that money as a loan fund to allow folks to hook up, use that to pay, and then they would pay back over time. And then we could continue circulating that four million dollars. Do you want to just flat-out pay for some? Or do you want to require hookups? The county has basically said, we'll follow your lead so long as you apply the same rules in the town. So if we, whatever, that's, they've given us that broad of a slate. So tonight, my suggestion is to adopt and authorize the mayor or the vice mayor in this instance to execute the grant agreement as we have sent out and published. I'll defer to Joe. Do you see it the same way or not?
Yeah, I agree, and then after this decision, under the same agenda item, I want to talk about a continuance of that, so.
Yes, campground, this is not the campground, that's a total.
No, I want to talk about this same grant applying for the additional monies, but we need, we need to.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Need to approve this first, but we've worked very hard to ensure that we can still get these projects in, and we won't have a hang-up, I don't believe, with D E P if we have issues with amount of hookups. So that was the big change, I think, in this agreement. And just to reiterate what Bert said, that the budget that here is rough, and we've been told by them that as we know better costs, that whole budget will move around. We've essentially been given the forty million dollars to try to attempt to get as much of this scope done as possible.
The language, the specific language used to say we would hook up twenty-eight hundred single-family residences around the lake. Then it was reduced to sixteen hundred, then it was changed. The most recent change that came in late last week said, you can hook up up to sixteen hundred. And I have an email chain very clearly saying, up to sixteen hundred does not require connecting one. And the clerk has saved that email, so that, I consider that somewhat unclear, so we have that clarification.
And I think that opens us, the town, up to be able to pursue additional funding grant in the future, if we can't get all the intended hookups. So this is the important, hard part of getting the mains in. And then the actual residence hooks-ups, we'll talk about after this is approved, hopefully.
So having been on the outside periphery of this, I know obviously Mr. Barber, Mr. Harris, and others have put a tremendous amount of time and conversation in this. And since they both are recommending the same thing, I think what this step does is we finalize the agreement with F D E P in that, as we're continuing to spend resources, allows us to get reimbursed for the vast majority of the resources we're expending that we've committed to, so.
Let's talk about that just a moment, it's still under this entire topic. They initially said Joe's salary was recoverable and could be funded under the grant. So we hired others to do Joe's job and put him in charge of the grant. Then they came back and said, no, we said, please, please, you said, and they said, yeah, you're right, we did. So that's good. They do not allow my time to be funded under the grant. So, nor Rachel's. So my suggestion is going to be that you keep track of mine. I still, and I'm going to try to get out of this discussion once legal is set. But anything I spend should come out of the regional utility or, and be a loan to the regional utility if it has to come out of general revenue. Because at the end of the day, it's, should be spread over the larger base, not the small twenty-five hundred.
Anyone have any, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Wilson, you have any questions of either Mr. Harris or Mr. Barber?
So you're looking for a motion then?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion that we authorize the mayor, the vice mayor, to enter in with F D E P on the forty-million-dollar grant.
Second.
Any further conversation, discussion up here? Anyone from the public like to comment? Seeing none, Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Barber, you wanted to make another suggestion or bring another matter on this?
Yes, on the same topic of the same D E P grant, there's another grant cycle open for this same exact grant. It was my intention to apply for the shortfall we have in hookups. I'm using rough numbers, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me, but remember, we looked at if all the hookups were paid and the projects we selected were in, we were looking at roughly seventy million. So there's like a thirty-million-dollar shortfall. It's my intention to put together that grant application for those hookups. Do you guys have any other different direction? I can change that, but I have like a week or two, a couple weeks to get that done and in. I guess the only question would be, do we want to then try to include some of those other projects that we had cut? But I think those are pretty big, and those were two, the Sun Lakes was the big project, and Highway Park. So those are pretty big, substantial projects. But I'm going back in for that, so I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, and I'm going in for what council wants.
Mr. Harris, from your perspective, is there any reason not to make application?
Oh, no, I totally support it, and I would include the, those two things that we've cut.
Do we, do we, Mr. Barber, so are you seeking a council recommendation or motion, or are you just asking for consensus to seek the application?
Somebody tells me, I guess I want some consensus as to what we want to put in for. Those other two projects, we're going to bump it significantly, so I just thought we would go in for the hookup costs. So I guess that's what we're asking. I don't want to hurt our chances by, instead of asking for thirty million, now going in for fifty or sixty on top of it.
But you can say X dollars for hookup and Y dollars for the other, so that could fund one without the other. And yes, we do need a motion, because Joe needs to be able to represent. This is a request by the Lake Placid Town Council.
So, Chair will entertain a motion that we approve that Mr. Barber, Mr. Harris are authorized to make application for additional grants related to this project. Does that cover it, Mr. Harris?
Yes, and I would suggest that if we have a special meeting on Camp and Conference Center, Joe and I'll bring you a resolution, because that seemed to help last time. I do and spell out what we're saying and what you're asking.
So moved. Ms. Hayes, you wanting to second that for the sake of discussion?
I'll second for discussion, yes.
Okay. Anything you'd like to say in support of your motion, Mr. Wilson?
I like the part about, you know, helping with the cost part of hooking up. We're going to spend a lot of money in the ground, and failure rates probably aren't going to make it viable. So it, we need to incentivize people hooking up to it where it does become cost-effective.
And let me say that I'm extremely, that's extremely important to me as well.
And I'm very concerned, as I've stated in other meetings, that we're going to create this beautiful project and then have nobody hook up to it, which Councilmember Sapp always says, no, you're wrong, but I'm still not, I don't think I'm wrong. But, but I share Joe's concern about adding too much to the grant. And if we can get the thirty thousand and keep it to what we have and allow for hookups for those areas that we've already identified, that's fine. I agree with the Sun and Lake project, I know it's a big part of it, but I also realize that it's on the lake. Highway Park is also on a lake, but, you know, I don't want to put this into a really big, as you said, Joe, seventy-million-dollar grant, and they look at it and they go, are you kidding me? But if we put it in for a thirty thousand grant, they might say, oh, yeah, well, that's all right. We can put in again later for another forty.
You're comfortable if Mr. Barber and Mr. Harris come to an agreement, which I will tell you is an interesting conversation.
Which may never happen, of course, yes.
If they come to an agreement on how to, what I'll call stair-step that application, where they are kind of a separate applications but contained, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
I am comfortable with that, and.
Or prioritizing what was first mentioned.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, just give them priorities.
Yes.
That makes it a lot easier.
Okay, okay, okay. Anything else up here? Anyone from the public? Okay, the motion we have is adequate to move us forward, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Eva?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Is that all for the F D E P grant, Mr. Barber?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. Harris to move forward on an update. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Harris today, and I guess I want to say this to Phil. I anticipate that both this F D E P grant process and the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center process is probably going to, or potentially could cause action at just about every meeting we have. So Eva, Phil, let's make sure for subsequent agendas that we word it so that we can go beyond the update process and we can take action as necessary for both of these projects, you know, so that we aren't, so that the public has the ability to know that we may take action on any given Monday evening or special meeting date, if that's okay with you all?
Right.
Okay, okay, Mr. Harris, I'll turn it over to you in regards to Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center.
I got to make a note to get that language, I'm sorry. Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center, we have been, I've had several good discussions with Matt, their attorney, thought we would be too U today to approve documents, got some more documents, noon today-ish, different grant agreement that finally recognizes the bulk rate pledge rather than our total revenue pledge. So that's going to cause a change in some documentation. So I would ask that you take no action tonight on Camp and Conference Center. This is not a debate or a discussion or disagreement with the Camp and Conference Center at all. There's been some friction, if you will, between the grant administration and both us and the Conference Center. I'll leave it at that. We do need a special meeting, would ask that you authorize the vice mayor to call a special meeting in ten to fifteen days, basically as soon as Eva can get it published to it. And I'll give Eva the notice requirement for that special meeting. Unlike regular generals, you don't have to give actual, accurate notice of what's to be discussed, but in a special meeting, you absolutely must. So we'll be very particular on the special meeting notice.
Mr. Harris, let me stop you one second. Are there any periods of time, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Hayes, that you know that you are going to be unavailable for a special meeting? I just wanted to get that out there, so we don't try to plan a meeting when we know that someone's going to be out of town.
I have a couple of dates in August, a couple of dates in September, and about ten days in October.
I think, Mr. Harris, you're talking about later here in the month of July, correct?
Ten to twelve days.
Ms. Hayes, are you okay through the first week of August or the first couple of days of August?
I am, I am, should be good with that, yes.
Mr. Wilson, how about you?
Yeah, I'll be gone the last week in July, so.
You'll leave on July twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, something like that?
No, the twenty-third. So I could be back, August first, I'll be back.
Okay, so you would be good through now and the twenty-third, or twenty-second, twenty-third? Mr. Barber?
And then after August first.
Just for reference, I just looked up that grant application is due next Friday, which is the twenty-second. So I got to hurry up and get that in. I don't know how that works with the schedule and what we need to do with the Camp and Conference Center.
How quickly can you publish, Eva?
I can have that published this weekend. If I get it in tomorrow, like, there's like a four-day cutoff. I don't know the exact dates, though. What time of day are we typically have these meetings, like around five-ish?
Five-thirty, yes, ma'am.
I would presume, yeah, I mean, you could do noon.
I'm not too happy with noon.
Okay, five, like five-thirty anyway. So everybody's available twenty-twenty-one? I mean, that's cutting Joe incredibly close.
Yeah, because, I mean, we'll need that resolution done and signed and everything to go in with the application.
So we would have, we're going to publish on two things, both the F D E P grant application resolution and action on the Lake Placid Camp and Conference Center items, correct?
Yes.
Twenty and twenty-one are Thursday, Friday?
That's Wednesday, Thursday. Friday is the day Joe's got to have it postmarked.
Yeah, I'd rather have it done on, at least by Thursday, so I can get it in Friday.
Can.
I can be available any day next week.
I can do twenty. I can do the twentieth, yes, sir. Ms. Hayes, Wednesday, are you talking about Wednesday, the twentieth, Mr. Harris?
I can move some things around.
Okay, and I don't, maybe even Mr. Sapp will be back with it. Okay, so do you want us to go, why don't we just announce that then we'll schedule a special meeting to consider those two items for Wednesday, July the twentieth, at five-thirty P M. Got to take care of what we need to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Eva, you'll, you'll, you'll stay with him, Mr. Harris is behind to make sure he gets you what he needs, so you can get it published and all that?
She does a good job of that, actually, yes.
Let us know if you need any help.
Okay, is there anything else in regards to Camp and Conference Center at this time, Mr. Harris?
No, unless folks have further questions on Camp and Conference Center.
Anything? Okay, we'll move to, are you, anything else on, from your part, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Williams, we'll move to six D. Utility rate discussion relevant to budget cycle planning.
During the budget planning session that staff has been having, it was discussed the timing of the utility rate, raising utility rates and implementing. the, the timing of the utility rate, raising utility rates and implementing all that with, with the meetings that have to be had and the two hearings and, and Bert usually has a little while to review everything and get that in line. Staff is just asking for a little bit better guidance. I know Ray said he wanted it to be timed right along with the budget hearings, but if that is the case, it's going to be, come into play on October the 1st, and then staff will need a little bit of time to implement it. So it may not be, I'm just trying to get some solid, some solid advice from council as to when you want to implement it.
If I might, my perspective is I just wanted that if we are going, if we need to, as we, as Mr. Barber's indicated, raise the utility, some of the utility, or consider raising the utility rates in order, in order for him to proper, for him and Mr. McCarthy to properly prepare their budgets, they need to kind of know, yes, are we going to be willing to consider raising utility rates? Is that accurate? And so my point was, let's get on it and have a realistic thing. Now, if, if that's going too fast, that's fine by me, but I just, I just didn't want us to pass a budget based on current rates that was unrealistic and then be two months later redoing everything, you know, if possible. I assume that's your, your point, Mr. Williams?
What we're trying to do is, I guess, maybe speed it up so we could go into the, into the budget cycle nice and clean on the, on October 1st.
Is there any objection to them speeding that process up?
I'm just curious as to making sure that the public is aware.
And we'll do all, there are certain, there's a lot of things that goes along with this rate, that rate thing, that they have to notify even above and beyond press notices and those kind of things. I think it has to be sent out into bills.
Yeah, we have to notify customers and do a mail or on their bills or.
Yeah. It's over and above just.
Well, with that said, I'm not so sure you're going to be able to augment the process like you think you would want to, because these things have to go out in the bills, et cetera.
Well, wouldn't the guidance be for staff to proceed as fast as reasonable and will come as close to the new year as possible?
Okay.
And I think.
The new budget year, to be clear.
Yes.
Not the new calendar year.
Not January.
You're right.
And that gives staff the ability to budget accordingly?
Yep, well, that's, in, in planning to implement it on, on October 1st, yes. I think the rate study is just about complete, am I correct on that?
Yeah, I've basically built a giant spreadsheet with a billing scenario where we can, we can put in different rates, also change the step, so I've done it again, but we can play with that spreadsheet and you, you see a final budget number based on some past years of consumption.
So we're ready, just about ready to put that before council, either via regular meeting or special meeting or workshop or whatever.
Right.
So council members, you all are comfortable with Mr. Barber proceeding exponentially, expeditiously, sorry? Expeditiously, I'm moving forward that, right, so we can consider that prior to final budget hearings? With, with taking all due process and.
Yes, with all due process, yes.
Okay, you comfortable?
Yes.
Is that good enough for you, Phil, that direction?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm in, we're in no way asking to raise the rates out of the blue without.
Right.
A lot of public hearings and, and obviously we're more visible now than we've ever been.
Okay.
I guess to clarify for staff, do, do you want an agenda item with that rate study spreadsheet and our, our estimated budget numbers to, to approve so we can go forward?
Yes.
Yes, I think, bring that back to us at our August meeting.
Okay, yes, sir.
Or shortly thereafter, whatever's appropriate. We're not going to try to cram that in on the 20th, but we're just going to handle those two things on 20.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Williams, chamber, Caladium banner, town code interpretation request. Chief Fassler, you want to come up to the microphone and address it?
Miss Bush cannot make the meeting, but I told her that I would put it on the agenda and bring it before you. This is just standard, the annual Caladium Festival's coming, they put the banners at each end of the town and in the, since we do have a new code enforcement officer and he's here today with us, it's Joshua Velazquez. He has taken over as our code enforcement officer, we just kind of want to be on the right foot. And when there's a question, we bring it before you, I let you give us the answer and we'll move forward. It does say that it is approved by resolution of the town council. So we want to make sure that we are on the right foot when we tell Jennifer she can put the banners up.
I'm not comfortable with that. I don't remember that resolution is designed, is the designed code way to approve signs, period.
It's just the way it's written, so I brought it before you.
Where it is? Banner locations, that's.
That's within code, Bert.
I, I agree, but as I recall, that code was written when we were looking at particular locations for more permanent banners, as I recall. Am I remembering that correctly?
It says up to 28 days of display, fourth line from the bottom.
All right, just give me a moment.
Fifth line from the bottom.
So out of curiosity, has the county engineer already weighed in on this?
No, I brought it before you first.
Okay.
You see the highlighted portion?
I do.
Will be attached.
So this isn't the banner at each end of town?
Right, it's going to be at the welcome signs, just like every year it's been previous.
You're doing that? Well, the welcome.
Yeah.
Is the south welcome sign even in the town?
I don't believe the south one is, but the north one is.
North one is.
So this one says that banners for community events may be allowed by permit issued by the town council. So the banner itself would be a permit, but the location of the banners would be approved by resolution.
So these are not banners going across Interlake Boulevard, these are hanging at the.
They're welcome signs.
Welcome signs.
Right.
Near the railroad trestle and down near Lake McCoy or whatever that is.
Right.
Okay, so is there an application so we know what the request is?
Yeah, I have, I have all the applications for permit. I just want to make sure that there was no issue with council, because I know it's been kind of questionable in the past, so I just wanted to be able to bring this one before y'all and let you know, that way everybody knows that that, that those banners up there have been given an approval and there is no question about them.
What I like is not to get surprised in the public meeting so we can find out and remember which ones are permitted, which ones are by resolution. Thank you for your catch on that. And then also, what is the request? So you have a written request and is it part of the agenda?
I don't know if it's in there or not.
Because this is something that's, if it's going to happen, it has to happen at this meeting because they're going to want to put the banner.
I want to put it on 15.
It's a similar event that's, that's coming up in three weeks, basically.
We know what the banner's going to say.
It's going to look exactly like the same ones over the last however many years, but it's just going to be a 12 by four banner that says Caladium Festival and has the dates on it.
Then I would suggest a resolution approving the location. Permit has to be issued for the words, is that the way that works, Melanie?
Yeah. Well, you have to, I mean, I've never approved this banner before. This is town council would be approving the banner permit, and they have to have at least a million dollar.
Permit by the town.
Liability indemnification.
Generally, we would see an application. If the council is going to approve it, then there would be a written application, there would be the million dollar public liability, which I thought applied to one over the road as opposed to on the side. So I think we waive that when it comes to this one. I mean, you.
The request before.
Catch me in a horrible spot when I don't know the request.
The request that I'm looking at right here, that you're looking at the same one, it says they are requesting the banner placement. This is submitted a request for banner placement. It doesn't talk anything about what the banner's going to say, they just want the approval to place the banner. I would think that having a permit for the banner would be where you would determine whether language was appropriate to the event or whatever, but they are just asking for permission to place the banner.
I, I agree. And I thought that's where, that's where I thought we were going when Melanie read me the language of, okay, we'll put the language on Melanie, but that's not what it says. It says, council, then why don't we say we approve the exact same banner, update the dates for the exact same locations? Now we're not doing it over the road, it's just on the welcome signs.
Correct.
It's been done that way for 30 years.
Right, but I didn't want to live by the, that's the way it's always been?
No, no, I get it.
Yeah.
I get it, I just, my, my point is, please, next time, let them write it down, you know, this is what we want to do, but let's put the words on it. And, and the reason I say that, the next application could be for the welcome signs, to put on the top of the welcome sign, we want the drag queen.
Mm-hmm.
Thing announced. So that's the reason, and you got to apply the same standards to any community event. Now, that one may not be a community event, that was probably more commercial related, but I, that's the reason I would want to see the words on the sign before we approve the location. Gives us much greater latitude in granting or denying. So in this case, if you're telling me it's going to be just like it was, same location, I'd say encourage the council to vote yes.
So what action, what action, or what, when someone makes a motion in a second, Mr. Harris, what do they need to make, how do they need to word their motion?
A move that we approve placement of the same chamber banner at the same location for the Caladium Festival and waive the $1 million bond, period.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hayes. Any further discussion? Anything from the public? Did that cover you, Ms. Culpepper? I mean, do you have any objection to that? Okay, okay, anyone from the public hearing none, all, I mean, I'm sorry, used to other kinds of meetings.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hayes?
Yes.
Councilmember Royce?
Yes. Okay, we've already discussed Del Hall and Main Avenue. Again, I, I see Mr. Harrison, back to Mr. Harrison, was there anything you, from your county position, you wanted to share with us?
I think that's really quite enough.
Okay.
Talk to the other Mr. Harris.
Harrison, not Mr. Harris.
Sorry. I'm deaf.
I just, you know, I see the road and bridge guy back there and I think, hmm, what's going on? Okay, well, I think we're at council members. Ms. Hayes, anything for the good of the order?
I have nothing today.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
Okay, any citizens not on the agenda? Are there any other citizens that would like to say anything? Okay, good. Well, then if there's nothing, I don't have anything. We will, again, we will see council members and hopefully the public on July 20th at 5:30 for our special meeting on two issues. Ms. Sauls, Ms. Culpepper, thank you for coming again on behalf of the county, we stand adjourned.
Lovely. Can I just shut this or do I have to shut this off?
You're supposed to shut it off.
Supposed to turn it off, right?
Yeah, we're supposed to turn it off.